Okay, it's 6:30, so we're going to get started. Good evening and welcome to this forum for the Gresham mayoral and city council position one candidates. This forum is being hosted by the Coalition of Gresham Neighborhood Associations. I'm Carol Rula, president of the Coalition, and I'll be moderator of the first panel of candidates this evening. First, I have an announcement of a change of plans for one of our candidates. Mayoral candidate Sean Bishop regrets that he is unable to participate tonight, but he wants everyone to know that he is still campaigning for mayor. And now, I'd like to welcome and thank the Gresham mayoral and city council position one candidates who are participating in this evening's forum. Mayoral candidates Joe Deimers, Eddie Morales, and Travis Stovall, and council position one candidates Dina Danucci and Jerry Hinton. Tomorrow evening, we'll hear from the candidates running for Gresham City Council positions three and five. Each evening, we'll hear from the candidates in two panels. This evening, we'll first hear from the mayoral candidates, and second, we'll hear from the council position one candidates. For each panel, we'll start with opening statements from each candidate, followed by three questions that were sent to all candidates in advance of the forum, then two questions collected from our online community survey, and finally, we'll have closing statements by each candidate. Candidates will have one minute for most responses and two minutes for the advanced questions. Tonight's questions were drawn from the responses of our online survey. Thank you to everyone who submitted questions. Sometimes similar questions submitted on the survey were combined, and sometimes questions were edited for brevity or to be applicable to all candidates. If you do not hear your question asked, it's because we received more questions than we have time for in these two forums. And with that said, let's start with one minute opening statements by our candidates for Gresham mayor, Joe Deimers, Eddie Morales, and Travis Stovall. We'll start with Joe Deimers. Joe, please briefly introduce yourself and give your qualifications for mayor, your reasons for running, and your goals if elected.
Hello, I'm Joe Deimers. I am a citizen candidate, blue collar worker, and non-establishment. I believe I have one of the best and most unique skill sets with the career in commercial driving, a background in customer service, customer relations, product distribution, product management, and routing. I have the ability to look at a map with several alternative routes and choose the best option with the least amount of obstacles. With my logistical and organizational skills, I understand the best options for prioritizing. I am running to preserve and protect our city's most crucial asset, public safety, and the goal to uphold nonpartisan government, common sense, and free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Eddie, please briefly introduce yourself, give your qualifications for mayor, your reasons for running, and your goals if elected.
Great, thank you Carol, and thank you to the Neighborhood Coalition for this continued advocacy for all of our residents and future residents, and for organizing this forum. This is one of the most informative events every election that I look forward to. I'm Eddie Morales, I'm a Gresham city councillor, a small business owner, and a community advocate. My life's work has centered on engaging people and empowering them to shape their communities and public policy that affects their lives. And I've done that as a city councillor. I don't just talk about bringing the community in, I actually do it. And more than that, I go out to the community, I meet them where they're at, and I ask them what they think about things. I've knocked on thousands of doors, and my volunteers who've joined me have knocked on thousands more, and I know that because of that, Gresham will be better served. Already, we've been able to get innovative housing communities and policies approved. We've begun exploring a parks and recreation district, and potentially piloting participatory budgeting. Our community has been our strength in these ideas, and I plan to continue to engage in this way.
Thank you. And now Travis, please briefly introduce yourself, give your qualifications for mayor, your reasons for running, and your goals if elected.
Thank you Carol. First, I would like to thank you all for joining us here today for such an important conversation during these incredibly challenging times. My name is Travis Stovall, and I'm a Gresham mayor, business leader, and community collaborator who has been on the front line fighting for our city for over a decade. I'm running to be the next mayor of Gresham, the region's brightest, boldest, and most unified city. For over 20 years, I've led fast growth projects in public and private sectors, including managing avenues health clinic expansion and helping dozens of struggling businesses in our region turn around in the years following the great recession. I've dedicated my career to uplifting and unifying communities from my time on the TriMet Board of Directors, Mount City Community College Foundation Board, to my years of service as the executive director of East Metro Economic Alliance. I have always put the interests of Gresham and our community first. My lived experience delivers an opportunity to lean into the social justice conversation that we so desperately need. I look forward to today's conversation about the future of Gresham and the important role the Gresham Neighborhood Coalition plays in achieving our collective goals for a city where everyone has the opportunity to thrive.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so now we're going to the next question. The candidates will have two minutes to answer. Our first advanced question, we asked the candidates to review the city manager's recent presentation on the city's forecasted $13.3 million budget gap and to review the city's current budget. The city manager proposes to close the budget gap by using one-time revenue, increasing the police, fire, and parks fee on utility bills, and cutting spending. The city manager presented four options to counsel. One option would double the police, fire, and parks fee to $15 per month. A second option would make two more gradual increases to the fee and raise it to $16.50 per month. The third option would make some cuts to police, fire, and park services and make a smaller increase to the fee. And a fourth option would make cuts to police, fire, and park service levels and no changes to the current $7.50 monthly fee. We asked the candidates, how would you address the city's forecasted $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future? Which of the four options to balance the police, fire, and parks fund do you support? And if you would make different budget cuts or use different existing or new revenue sources, how would you fill the $13.3 million budget gap by fiscal year 2021 to 2022? And do you support raising new revenue in the future? And if so, how do you support fees to raise revenue? So we'll start with Eddie Morales. Eddie, how would you address the city's forecasted $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future?
Thank you Carol. I think it's important for our community to understand how we got here. After I was sworn in as a city councillor nearly two years ago, I really started digging into the city's finances and quickly learned that for decades, under Mayor Shane Bemis, the city had been overspending each year. Where did that money come from? Our general fund and potentially rainy day funds that we should have right now for our community during this pandemic. I can't change what happened before my time on city council, but I want voters to know that I voted no on this budget because it was not balanced and because it continued to kick the can down the road rather than solving the problem. Mayor Bemis and his supporters temporarily plugged the budget holes by charging regressive fees that made utility bills very expensive for our most vulnerable residents. We're going to be discussing and voting on increasing this fee tomorrow at the city council meeting, and I probably will vote against this option, which has not worked. The proposal to double the fees comes at a time when people are already struggling to pay their bills. Community members should not have to fill the budget holes left by Mayor Bemis and his supporters. It's heartbreaking and irresponsible, and it's why I propose that Gresham needs an independently elected auditor to keep tabs on our finances and on our way that we use our tax money. If we had an independent auditor in place, I believe that person would have called out these problems a while back. Now to the proposal at hand. I think we need to freeze nonessential spending. We need to rebalance the budget within our current means. For example, this may include cutting funding of $100,000 to the Chamber of Commerce for tourism that was put in place when Mayor Bemis took office. We need to explore ways to share costs and reach economies of scale that actually provide us better services, like exploring a fire district, which is strongly supported by the firefighters' union, and a parks and recreation district, which is largely supported by our community. We need to advocate for more resources from the county, metro, state, and federally for our qualified programs and expenses, and we must get rid of regressive utility fees.
You're on time, thank you. Travis, how would you address the city's budget, the forecasted $13.3 million? Sorry, how would you address the city's forecast $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future?
Thanks Carol. So first, I think everyone has to realize this is a complex issue that we have to approach with a decisive intent, but also in a way that allows us to be nimble. The truth of the matter is, is we don't know yet the full impact of COVID-19 and what we'll have on our budget, as no one has been able to actually plot out how we'll actually get our arms around the public health crises. And even before COVID-19, we had budget challenges. If you look at like-sized cities, we have a significantly lower budget amount than other similar-sized cities that can invest in their communities for the beautiful things that we have been able to put into place over the last few years. Number one, there is no way out of the budget crisis that doesn't overburden our working families and businesses in Gresham without additional federal intervention assistance. I'm already pressing ahead forward in conversations to see what this looks like for the city of Gresham for that additional assistance. I hold confidence that we will get that assistance from our federal and our state to weather this storm locally. Secondly, in regards to the options before city council right now, I believe we have to increase the police, fire, and parks fee. It's essential to establish annual indexing if we want to save critical services and champion equity as which we do need to. When we do that, that depends on what we continue to see over the next few months, but I think we need to get that additional fee in as soon as possible so that we can have adequate foundation and funding for our critical services. Beyond those two things, we're in a game of wait and see together. What is important, and while we gather together more information, is how do we survive through COVID-19 and fully commit ourselves to coming through this together and ensuring that no member of our community falls through the cracks. I believe any conversations beyond that are premature and don't best position us to adapt to what comes next.
Thank you. Joe, how would you address the city's forecast $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future?
Am I odd? Okay. Honestly, I don't support any of the four options, but if I had to choose, it would be option three. In the city manager's presentation, he uses a graph that demonstrates the flat line of new revenue to support the increasing cost of the police, fire, parks fund. Since its inception in 2012, this fund has been neglected with no new long-term strategies of new revenue. It's been almost a decade in the making, and now this administration wants to fast-track the balancing of the general fund by burdening its citizens, in part by increasing utility fees and indexing them annually during one of the most financially vulnerable times in this city's history. This is not acceptable in my view, and on top of that, insulting to the citizens of Gresham when this administration still has no long-term strategy and has hired out to a consulting firm to get it done. This means we would effectively be throwing our money into a black hole with the reset on the general fund for them to do as they please with no solution. I propose a long-term approach to service the debt by taking advantage of the increase of the transient lodging tax at 8%, 3% of which the city receives by creating new tourism attractions to Gresham, the likes of which would bring in intercity, interstate, and even international consumer dollars, plus other quick revenue-producing options. This will hold our leadership to responsibility of payback for their own mistake while offsetting responsibility on the taxpayers of Gresham. Also using the CARES Act funding to bolster struggling small businesses in Gresham to lower or stop the closure of any more business that would hurt our economy. We should not be taking a knee-jerk approach during this pandemic, but secure a very important financial supporter in our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you Joe. Now we have the next question. Yeah, go, thank you. The second question, we asked the candidates to review the mayor's pledge on police reform that was signed by former mayor Bemis this spring. We then asked candidates, do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? How would you address the community's concerns about policing? Would you, should some of the funding for police be redirected to address mental health or other social services that impact policing? We'll start this question with Travis Stovall. Travis, do you believe that police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? How would you address the community's concerns about policing?
Thank you Carol. There's no one-size-fits-all solution for any problem, especially not the improvements we want to see in our public, in our local public safety. Gresham's concerns have to be approached through the lens of what will bring our community together, not the loud voices from other cities. Do we need additional investments in mental health? Of course we do, and in social, absolutely. Does that money need to come from the Gresham Police Department? I don't believe that is the answer. What I've heard from Gresham residents of all backgrounds and political leanings is that they want a local public safety system that is centered in community, responsive, and accountable to the values and standards we've set for our city. That doesn't mean abolishing or defunding the police department. That means ensuring that we're invested in public safety that represents the true diversity of our city and that has steadfast commitment to the well-being of everyone in our city. My lived experience gives me the unique perspective of being an African-American man who has experienced some of the things that are referenced and gives me the ability to lean into that. And so these words do not come from an empty promise or perspective. My goal as mayor is, for Gresham, is to become a regional leader in what is truly a community-focused and centered public safety system and what that looks like. When I look around at what is happening across the region, I see some challenging situations occurring that I can't fully critique because that would be unfair criticism, since I am not leaning into those situations myself, kind of like a Monday morning quarterback. But I can confidently say that this is not how we will move forward in Gresham. Those are not the values or tactics that benefit anyone in our community. We will have unity, accountability, and inclusion, the true Gresham way.
Thank you. I will move on to Joe. Do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? How would you address community concerns about policing?
I do not believe Gresham police need the type of reform that is currently the national narrative. There is no evidence that police brutality is prominent in Gresham. The same evidence lacks in racial profiling and militarized officers, except for special units. With the overall crime rate in Gresham being 49% higher than the national average and property crime being 55% higher than the national average, because of financial neglect for nearly a decade allowing for a loss in staffing for most internal services and due to lose more, this city, whether intentionally or unintentionally, has effectively defunded our police department. The decriminalization of drug use in our streets and district attorney that refuses to prosecute looting and rioting, these figures are sure to increase. The citizens of this great city should be more concerned about personal safety with service calls, response times now increasing. With less than one officer per thousand people, we should be talking about how to increase public safety by increasing staffing, bringing in new revenue per fiscal year to service cost increases, to service the training needed in our officers to better meet the public need, and to stay on top of the climbing crime rate. We need to prioritize our safety with the brave men and women who put their lives on the line night and day to protect us, not on new normal, a new normal of perceived justice that hasn't even been tested or proven to work per demographics. This overall decline has made the city very vulnerable and should be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you Joe. Next, Eddie, do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? How would you address community concerns about policing?
Yes, community health and public safety reforms are definitely necessary. Until everyone in our city feels safe, and I wanted to say that I believe Black Lives Matter, we must continue to reimagine and address community concerns. I think that there's like five easy things that we can do as a city to do so. One, I think we could establish a public safety committee that is made up of residents that provide oversight, creating transparent, accountable feedback loops between our community and our police. We could have more transparent and independent ways for residents to file complaints regarding our police officers or our policies without fear of retaliation, whether it's profiling, use of force, harassment, or misconduct. Currently, residents have to call the police to file these complaints, and these complaints are managed and investigated internally, not independently, and there's no real accountability. We can do a better job of making this information public, as well as police officers' history of behavior. And yes, we do need more resources and to resource community groups and clinics for mental health, addiction, workforce development, housing, and reformative justice practices. We also need more training for our officers to respond and properly redirect these cases to our partners. We should abide by the eight-count wait principles that require de-escalation, duty to intervene, and banning of chokeholds and strangleholds, requiring warning before shooting, banning shooting of moving vehicles, exhausting all alternatives before shooting, and use of force comprehensive reporting. Finally, we should track and publicly report racial profiling and hate crimes in our community.
Thank you. Now we'll move to our third advanced question. We asked the candidates to review the city charter and the priorities identified by the current charter review committee. We then asked the candidates, what changes in the charter do you think are needed, and would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes if they were put on the ballot? For example, do you support districting for councillor elections, term limits, an elected auditor, campaign finance reform, requiring a majority vote rather than a plurality in races with more than two candidates, or other charter changes? We'll start this question with Joe Deimers. Joe, what changes in the city charter do you think are needed, and would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes that were put on the ballot?
I would like to see these changes to the following. Section 31a 3 should have an additional clause naming details of specific corruption as to not be abused by state-level administration by leaving it open to one's own interpretation. Section 45a should be reduced to 50% of the electors casting votes on measures. Section 45b should be changed to the council shall appoint a citizen committee to review the charter every four years or equal to the term limits of each elected mayor, not consisting of any elected official to avoid conflict of interest. Also, the adding of an internal auditor clause in chapter three of the charter voted in and removed by council as a permanent position. I would also like to outline term limits with a maximum two terms served for all council seats and the mayor. I would campaign for special districts to be put into the charter for each of the six council positions, taking into account demographics, diversity, and voter affiliation in designing the borders. This will ensure a proper voting structure, giving all community members for each district a chance to serve our city. It also takes away the manipulation and monopoly of votes according to identity politics, balancing out the power structure so the nonpartisan politics can be outlined, and which also gives some power back to neighborhoods, driving incentive for council to meet specific needs for each district. I would also go for campaign finance reform, outlining limitations to grassroots efforts and eliminating donations from out-of-state influence and non-governmental organizations. Thank you.
Thank you Joe. So now Eddie, what changes in the city charter do you think are needed, and would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes that were put on the ballot?
Yeah, some of the problems that we are facing today in our city are really a lack of good governance policies. And I've been advocating for electing an independent auditor. This would have prevented the financial situation that we're in and called to question inappropriate use of funds for the public to know, such as some of our spending, questionable use of community development block grant funds that are intended to be used on our neediest of communities, and special funds that have been created. I think term limits are also important. Our city has been run by a small, insular group of people that have really enriched themselves and friends, and some of our councillors have been on the council often over 20 years. Our former mayor Shane Bemis served on the council for 18 years and as mayor for 14. Districts are also important. Prior to 2018, when I ran, there was rarely contested elections, and one of our most populous neighborhoods, Rockwood, has not once had a representative from that neighborhood on council. So I do support districts.
Thank you. I hit that and it didn't work. So Travis, what changes in the charter do you think are needed, and would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes if they were put on the ballot?
Carol, that's, it's actually a great question, and I applaud the other two candidates for leaning into it because that's appropriate. But I, actually, I am the current city charter committee chair, and at this point, it would be inappropriate for me to opine on any changes to the charter as kind of put forth by the, at the state ethics committee. The direction we've received as committee members is that we need to be impartial as we have this discussion and deliberation. I think that's what the citizens of Gresham want and need. It's a group and a committee that's really focused on listening to the public and citizens to ensure that we move the effort of the city charter review forward. So at this point, you know, we really need to address the changing city demographics, economics, size, all of those need to be addressed through the city charter, and I welcome the opportunity to kind of lean into that discussion as a committee, although I'll have to abstain from any more in-depth response to this question specifically.
Great, thank you Travis. So now we're moving into the questions that were collected from the online survey that community members use to submit questions, and candidates will have one minute for these answers. So we'll start with Eddie Morales. Eddie, if you were elected, how much time do you anticipate spending each week on mayoral duties? And within this allocation of time, how do you plan to stay connected with various constituent groups in the city?
Thanks Carol, great question. You know, all of us put quite a bit of time into our duties right now in council. The meetings are just a part of that. There's committees that we serve on, and then there's actually work that we champion. There's committees that we serve on, and then there's actually work that we champion. And so I continue to do that. You know, I've worked with the community to champion some affordable housing project in Rockwood, Rockwood 10. And so I think, you know, we're looking at at least 30 hours of work a week for, for this position. I do want to remind people that we are a strong city manager position, and so we're a policymaking board, and our city manager runs the day-to-day hiring and firing of the operation of the organization and so. But yes, our time should be spent out engaging the community in decisions that we make and helping to champion policies that we put forth, which there will be quite a bit in the next couple of years.
Thank you. So Travis, if you were elected, how much time do you anticipate spending each week on mayor duties? And within this allocation of time, how do you plan to stay connected with various constituent groups within the city?
Thank you, Carol. It's an excellent question, of course. You know, on the average, I would say 18 to 22 hours per week in regards to the average. Some weeks, you know, we'll have various things going on, and there'll be more similar to what Council Morales just referenced, and then some weeks there'll be less. And so I just want to make sure that the folks, we can lean into conversations and the discussions that folks are having to make sure we are responsive. And as already been referenced, we do have that strong city manager type of, type of city governance and city operations. And so we have that in place, and in some sense, we do want the mayor and the council to respect that as we continue to move forward. And there are plenty of ways. I've been a part of our Gresham community for 14 years and around this community for 20, and I have always been connected to our, to our community in a number of ways, and will continue that effort through engagement on committees, subcommittees, and also being engaged just around town as normally.
Thank you. So Joe, don't unmute yet till I read the question, please. So if you were elected, how much time do you anticipate spending each week on mayor duties? And within this allocation, how do you plan to stay connected with the various constituent groups within the city?
I would give as much time as necessary as, as it would take. I would like to see our council-city meetings move up to probably four a month. That way, we could include the citizenry, as many as possible into those meetings and continue using town halls, events, and public meetings to promote citizen involvement and awareness and things like Zoom to do that. I would also like to meet quarterly with neighborhood associations to make sure that we're being aware of what each of the communities need for their neighborhoods. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much the gist of it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So now we're on to the next question. This is for Travis Stovall first. So Travis, what does Black Lives Matter mean to you? Did you support flying the Black Lives Matter flag at City Hall this summer? And why or why not?
So, you know, that's, that's really a complex question, and it evokes emotion for me because, as you know, I'm an African-American man, and I referenced earlier that, you know, I've had my challenging experiences in our country and some of the systemic and systematic criticism that I've experienced personally. And so, and to me, it's, it's the, it's the notification that we all are in this together, and as Black Lives, we have seen challenges as a group of people. I have seen challenges as a group of people, and we need to recognize that and ensure we're tearing down any of those barriers that get in the way of all of us being able to experience what's rightfully, you know, all of ours to experience through an equity lens. And so that's the critical thing that Black Lives Matter means to me. And I really didn't, I, I don't know about the Black Lives Matter flag and what that question is a reference to, whether I support it or not, but I certainly understand and appreciate the efforts that we have when we think about Black Lives and how they matter to us.
Thank you. So Joe, what does Black Lives Matter mean to you? Did you support the flying of the Black Lives Matter flag at City Hall this summer? Why or why not?
No, I opposed it as a matter of fact. Some of you may know that I started the Gresham Back to the Blue Page to support our police because flying that flag up there means to me and a lot of others in Gresham that it's, they have since then become incorporated. So it's, in a lot of people's mind, it represents Marxism. And so by doing that, the city hall represents one side of the spectrum and not both sides. So I opposed it originally, and we need to make sure that we are reaching out to our community members, our Black minority members, and making sure that we can stay civil with them and not have a lot of arguments. But with that said, we need to make sure that we're participating in nonpartisan government as officials for the city.
Thank you. So Eddie, what does Black Lives Matter mean to you? Did you support the flying of the Black Lives Matter flag at City Hall this summer? Why or why not?
Thank you, Carol. You know, one of the biggest strengths of our city is our diversity. So almost 40% of our city are Black, Indigenous, or people of color, and almost 20% of our city are non-US-born. And for me, I did support and continue to support the Black Lives Matter flag being flown over City Hall and the Black Lives Matter movement. For me, it was about creating a culture of inclusion in our city. It was about acknowledging that a part of our community was, has been disproportionately impacted and saying, we see you, and Gresham is a place of inclusion. Last year, I worked with Black leaders in our community to do our first Juneteenth event. We had thousands of Black families come to that. For me, it is about creating a culture of inclusion that celebrates the diversity, and it also stands for us not being a place that tolerates hate or hate speech.
Thank you. So for our next question, we'll start with Joe Deimers. And Joe, what are your plans to bring quality, well-paying jobs to the city?
Well, Trump released something called Opportunity Zones. Gresham is almost completely covered by Opportunity Zones. So as the next mayor, if I get elected in, I will be pursuing investors for the city. We need to get back to rebuilding businesses and not low-income housing units. I believe those have stifled our, our funding and our revenue in the city, and we need to be able to bring in businesses that will bring in new revenue for the city so that it survives. I don't want to see any more business closures here, and given that the federal government is going to be $27 trillion in debt, to service that debt, it takes 40% of the taxpayer dollars to service it, and that's going to affect Gresham as well. So we need to be looking at our small businesses more than anything and more than ever before. Thank you.
Thank you. So Eddie, what are your plans to bring quality, well-paying jobs to the city?
Thank you, Carol. So a couple of things. One is, we do need to be using our enterprise zone and opportunity zones to attract family paying jobs. And I think we, as a city, we could do a little more to demand more job creation with those incentives, which I think we've probably not done as well of a job doing that. You know, during COVID in March, I was a big supporter of getting our small businesses $10,000 emergency grants. A large part of our economy in Gresham are small businesses, and so we got to continue to foster and provide resources for a thriving small business. I am the vice chair of our Gresham Redevelopment Commission, and so we have a construction happening in our urban renewal zone in that I continue to demand that those are well-family paying jobs, and I think that we need to do that as we put forth contracts with construction that will be happening based on our metro, housing, parks, and nature, and maybe transportation bonds.
Thank you. So now Travis, what are your plans for bringing quality, well-paying jobs to the city?
So, you know, it's critical that we actually look at how do we, how we first support our core businesses that are here, the small businesses that exist in our community are the lifeblood of who we are and are the lifeblood of the jobs. But we also need to augment that with the traded sector businesses, businesses that bring dollars from outside the region to our incredible city. And so to do that, we've got to partner with regional types of organizations and groups, sort of what we've done with Portland, who have brought businesses into our community and brought capital, because that is truly the foundation. The tricky part about our enterprise and in our opportunity zones, which are critical to our growth, is that we're also competing with other, other communities that have those same tools. So we have to be innovative as we look to include things like tourism. We need to support the chamber, not lessen the funding there, as we look to grow our community. And that's where the economic development starts, leaning on our businesses that can absolutely bring others to our community so that we can give our folks finally these jobs.
Thank you. So this next question will start with Eddie Morales. Eddie, numerous apartments are being built all over the city, but they include only tiny play areas for children and little to no access for parks. What's your plan for increasing and sustaining investments in our park system and adding new parks in underserved neighborhoods?
Thank you, Carol. You know, as, as many people watching know, our city has continued to divest in parks and recreation, and actually, our park system right now consists of maybe eight employees who, most of their job is to maintain parks. A lot of that burden has been put for recreation on community groups and community leaders to do that. I was a big supporter of the Parks and Metro Bond that passed. I brought that to the council and it passed unanimously. I was proud that Gresham voted over 50% in support of that bond, and I've been advocating for us to explore a feasibility study to look at what it would cost to have a Parks and Recreation District for our city, including a Parks District. And I'm a proud member of the Our Parks, Our Future Coalition, and encourage people to plug in and learn more about that.
Thank you. So Travis, numerous apartments are being built all over the city, but they include only tiny play areas for children and little to no access to parks. What's your plan for increasing and sustaining investments in our park system and adding new parks in underserved neighborhoods?
First and foremost, you know, in these challenging COVID times, we're going to have to lean into some of these challenges appropriately and effectively. But, you know, as, as just was mentioned by Council Morales, we do have to start looking at how do we make the long-term investments and deliver stabilized funding to our park system? Because it's critical, because that comprehensive perspective to our community is important to the livability that we want to have in Gresham. And I absolutely think the long-term potential solution is looking at Parks District, but that needs to be something that, that the voters need to have an opportunity to voice their thoughts and concerns about. So in regards to the challenges that exist currently, again, we've got to take the opportunity to lean into what's going on, but in the long term, we've got to find that more stable funding, and that may look, that's, that's looking at other opportunities, including tourism, to fund the challenges and the gaps and potentially a Parks District.
Thank you. So Joe, numerous apartments are being built all over the city, but they include only tiny play areas for children and little to no access to parks. What's your plan for increasing and sustaining investments in our park system and adding new parks in underserved neighborhoods?
Well, with the parks, like they both said, it's really burdened our general fund. So to me, I think we should find a way to disconnect our parks from the PFP Fund and make it independent and let the community go at it if they want it to be successful, because there is no instant solution for the money problems that we have here in Gresham. And it's going to take even longer to come up with new revenue to support the parks like the citizens want. So we need to have a comprehensive plan to raise new revenue to build those parks the way that the citizens want them to. So we need, the best solution for that is to go independent, in my opinion.
Thank you. So this next question, we'll start with Travis Stovall. So Travis, Gresham recently doubled the city privilege tax on residents' water, phone, Northwest Natural Gas, and PGE bills, and now the council is discussing doubling the $7.50 monthly fee on our water bills to $15 a month. High-income earners can absorb this, but lower income to middle-income folks cannot. What structure would you propose so that fees and taxes are based on income?
So that's, as you can imagine, that's a complex question, because absolutely, the fee is regressive, and so it hits our most vulnerable population the worst. There are ways that we can mitigate that. At TRIMET, we actually, I've been on TRIMET board for nine years. We actually have low-income fare program that allows folks who are at the lowest end of the socioeconomic ladder to either pay little to no fare to write TRIMET. I think we can institute and implement something like that that assists us. In the long term, there's potential of pulling out, you know, some of the essential services into their own districts, fires, maybe parks, but that, again, needs to be looked at critically and to see how we support that effort, because once we pull those out, it opens up the permanent tax rate to get filled back in, which is part of the challenge that the citizens need to lean into. But, and, and that's effectively a way that delivers a tax that's more progressive than regressive against our, our folks on the lowest end of the socioeconomic status, which can harm those individuals.
Thank you. So Joe, Gresham recently doubled the city privilege tax on residents' water, phone, Northwest Natural Gas, and PGE bills, and now council is discussing doubling the $7.50 monthly fee on our water bills to $15 per month. High-income earners can absorb this, but lower to middle-income folks cannot. What structure would you propose so that fees and taxes are based on?
Once again, I don't support the raising of fees on our water bill. Since we're connected to the Portland Water, they plan on raising it as well, and that's supposed to be up like 250% on their end, so we're going to be suffering from that. I think we should look at, since we're talking about bringing in consumer dollars from different places in order to support our city, we have been capped out on our property taxes because of state law. I think we should be looking at maybe switching to sales tax in order to benefit from incoming resources from intercity, interstate, and maybe even international, and I think that would be a good thing for us.
Thank you. Eddie, Gresham recently doubled the city privilege tax on residents' water, phone, Northwest Natural Gas, and PGE bills. Now council is discussing doubling the $7.50 monthly fee on our water bills to $15 per month. High-income earners can absorb this, but lower to middle-income folks cannot. What structure would you propose so that fees and taxes are based on income?
Carol, you know, this fee is a regressive fee, and a lot of our community is living at the margins. Our seniors are people who are on fixed incomes, and so $15, $30 is really the difference between someone getting their medication or, you know, being evicted or not making a mortgage payment. So I don't support regressive fees like this. They're not equitable. And I guess one idea could be to look at consumption and usage when applying a fee like that. I think we have to be looking at more sustainable ways of getting revenue, like I mentioned, exploring districts for fire and parks, as well as really taking this issue head-on. It's been kicked down the road for 20 years now, and so really working with our legislators and our governor to figure out how we figure out a more permanent, sustainable taxing structure for this.
Thank you. So now our next question will start with Joe Deimers. Joe, what is your vision for public safety, specifically more police presence in neighborhoods to deter crime?
Well, it starts with staffing. I mean, there, there's no doubt about it, we are We are down 13 positions from this time last year and due to the 2021 budget, we're due to lose more. So we're, we, we keep losing officers. And right now, I know they're dealing with 200 to 300 calls per night. And it's hard for them to service those as it is. And with the mental health issues out on the street and the homeless, there's no other way to service those calls except to increase our staffing. So funding is the number one thing that needs to be addressed to bring in, to support our police and, and make sure that they have more staffing. Thank you.
Thank you. So Eddie, what is your vision for public safety, specifically more police presence in neighborhoods to deter crime?
Yeah, Carol, you know, it has, it has been proven that some of our safest neighborhoods actually don't have a large police presence. Because they have other things in place like stable housing, good paying jobs, parks and recreation, things that actually help build community. And so knowing that we're going to have to make tough decisions and cuts across the board in our city because of the financial situation, we have to engage the community and think in more creatively about community policing, community safety, and thinking about how we help create environments that foster more community accountability. And so I'm really interested in engaging the community on figuring that stuff out and using our investments in housing and parks to create those types of ecosystems.
Thank you. So Travis, what is your vision for public safety, specifically more police presence in neighborhoods to deter crime?
So there, you know, there's tons of research that actually outlines the fact that a reduction in poverty actually leads to a reduction in crime. And there's so much that's been left out of the crime-poverty conversation due to that correlation. And that's where we need to, that's where we need to lean in. You know, jobs is the critical foundation to reducing that. Right now, we're actually low on our police per thousand. So I don't, I, I do not lean into the idea of a further reduction of our police force. But the, the additional training, some of the 21st Police, 21st Street Policing, some of the stuff that has proven to get great results based on data and information. But truly, my heart, my heart exists in ensuring that we can have a, a reduction in poverty within our community by ensuring jobs, leveraging the enterprise zones, leveraging the opportunity zones, bringing business here to Gresham so that those individuals have tremendous opportunity to survive and thrive without the additional concept of bringing on kind of more police presence when that may not necessarily be.
Thank you. So this next question will go to Eddie Morales. So Eddie, as a society, we're getting more divided. How will you encourage unity instead of division among residents?
Yeah, Carol, I, you know, I think that our national politics and the fear mongering and, and dog whistles are being used to create that division. What we do in the work that I've done over the last 20 years is you bring people and you, you unite them around common issues and common values. And I think that people here in Gresham, our common value is our love for this place and for one another and for community. And the issues, well, there's plenty of them for us to work on together. Whether it's our city's budget, whether it's our Parks and Recreation. And so I think we have to create the space for community to come together to talk about the issues and not political ideology. And definitely stay away from the fear mongering and this idea that we don't want to be, Portland, we don't want to be another place. Those are distractions from the real issues that our community is, are dealing with here. And we should lean into those and really help to create the leadership to hold those conversations around solutions.
Thank you. So Travis, as a, as a society, we're getting more divided. How will you encourage unity instead of division among residents?
Carol, that starts with really putting forth the vision for what we want to accomplish and starting with where we agree. One of the things that I'm incredibly proud of is in, here in the east, on the east side, the east side had been working for decades to find a solution, transportation solution between ID4 and Highway 26. For almost four decades, these four communities have been working hard with no real outcome, with no real determination of how to address the transportation challenge. After three years, when I was Executive Director of East Metro Economic Alliance, 25-plus different stakeholders voted unanimously to support one best solution. That's because we started with where we agree. We brought together the, the components, the data and information that supported the actual outcome that needed to be discovered and needed to be approved. And that's how we get stuff done. That's how we get stuff done across the region. That's how we get stuff done in Gresham. That's how we move stuff forward. And that's why we have Gresham Together.
Thank you. Joe, as a society, we're getting more divided. How will you encourage unity instead of division among residents?
Well, number one, we need to get away from identity politics. I believe labeling causes division. It's, it's not good for our society to be saying that one another, pointing fingers at one another than saying that's hate speech. We need to step away from that. We need to go towards communication. Communication is the only way that we can approach each other and talk and understand what one, what one or another is about. And if we don't give each other the chance to speak our minds and we're telling the other one they have to be quiet, we can never approach unity. So I am asking for communication across the board.
Thank you. So our next question is for Travis. Since the start of the pandemic, council meetings have been at 10:00 AM and there's a 24-hour notice requirement to give public comments. Will you commit to returning to evening meetings at least once a month? And what can be done to make city meetings and public comments more accessible to all?
So, yes, I mean, I think as, as a council, we need to be available and we need to make sure that we, we have the meetings at times that folks can actually engage. I, I believe there's also other ways that we could potentially deploy to engage. We've got different technology opportunities today. I think our experience now with, with the digital deliverance of information and data, similar to what we're doing now, as it will enhance the ability for folks who have historically not been able to lean in some of, some of these conversations regarding council can, might now be able to do that. And so making sure that we've got at least one or two meetings accessible in the evenings is something I'd be very interested in. And to see how we do that, would really want to look at and listen to the rest of the council to ensure that's something that works for everybody and then ensure that we can actually get the public more engaged and leverage, again, leverage some new technologies that allows the, the public to, again, actually lean in and be able to voice their thoughts and concerns about what's going on in their city.
Thank you. So Joe, since the start of the pandemic, council meetings have been at 10:00 AM and there's a 24-hour notice requirement to give public comments. Will you commit to returning to evening meetings at least once a month? And what can be done to make city meetings and public comment more accessible to all?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said earlier, I would love to go to like four meetings to make it accessible for the, more accessible for the community. I think maybe City Hall should invest in a server. That way we would be able to access several different applications that are able to handle the physical presence of people on those apps so that more people can, you know, come in on city council meetings and listen in and be involved in the changes of theirs, for their city.
Thank you. Eddie, since the start of the pandemic, council meetings have been at 10:00 AM and there's a 24-hour notice requirement to give public comments. Will you commit to returning to evening meetings at least once a month? And what can be done to make city meetings and public comments more accessible to all?
Yes, to returning to evening meetings all of the time. You know, when I first joined the council two years ago, one of the very first meetings I went to, we had a resident of our community who didn't speak English. And the meeting was hosted in Spanish, in English. When I asked if there was a Spanish interpreter or there, there was nothing available. I asked if there was interpretation equipment that I could use to interpret. That was not available. We changed that and now provide interpreters at City Hall meetings and events. We have translation equipment. I also advocated for childcare and for food to be served at our meetings to allow people to have something to eat or their children to be taken care of so that they could participate. I think we need to be moving to more inclusion so that we have a government, a government that is reflective and inclusive of its people. Not taking actions like having a meeting in the middle of the day when people are going back to work, when people are now parenting at home. And then putting really strict requirements, like 24-hour notices before public comment.
Thank you. So for our next question, we'll go to Joe Deimers. Joe, what is your vision for repairing public confidence in the management of the city?
So yeah, like I said earlier, communication is going to be the best thing. Community involvement, getting, keeping in touch with neighborhood associations. Like I said, I would like to meet with them quarterly. Making sure that we, you know, address the needs for each of those neighborhoods each quarter. And interacting in ideas so that we have the best overall fit for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie, what is your vision for repairing public confidence in the management of the city?
You know, Carol, the first thing we have to do is tell our residents what happened. To this day, our council, our leadership, our city has not put out a statement about why there was so many, an exodus of people in June. We need to stop hosting meetings with very short notice. And we have to stop doing things like tomorrow's vote on the fee. If you read that on the agenda, you would not know that that is the utility fee increase. And so we just have to be more transparent about this. We have to include more people in the process. And so, you know, first of all, it's, it's putting out the information about what happened. And I hope we'll be able to do that once our investigation is, is, comes to a halt. But then it's really restoring faith by engaging more of our community in the solutions of the problems we have.
Thank you. So Travis, what is your vision for repairing public competence in the management of the city?
Yeah, first and foremost is transparency. You know, we need to ensure that we've got ways that we can deliver the information to our citizens in a way that they can understand it. And that's been one of the things that we've worked hard to do on many of the boards that I've sat on and organizations I've had the opportunity to help lead is ensuring that we actually deliver information in a way that folks can look at it and digest it. And sometimes we do shroud some things in complexity and it's unneeded complexity. So we start with transparency. We reach out and we start to understand how folks feel, what are their thoughts? Making sure that we engage the public and our citizenry in what are their thoughts and ideas. And I think that is the way that we build trust. Many times we, we make decisions, we sometimes move stuff forward as leaders and we don't always lean into and listen to, you know, what the folks are telling us. And we want to make sure that we do that. That's, that's the way to rebuild that trust, put the foundation back in the, the faith that our, our leaders in our city operations will fulfill the needs and wants of our, of our folks that live here.
Thank you. So this question starts with Eddie Morales. Eddie, what role should the mayor play in addressing climate change in the city of Gresham?
So I'm really excited that we're exploring the idea of creating a climate action task force. I think we've done some good work in terms of our solar here. I think we've done some good work in terms of restoring our watersheds. And I'm proud to be on the Watershed Council. I'm excited to be on, on the Urban Forestry Committee and I hope that we continue to expand our tree canopy. And we've been in discussions around wind power. And so I hope we continue, that we'll make investments in that area. I think the Parks and Nature Bond again provides us an opportunity to put some resource behind access to green spaces and preservation of green spaces. And then ultimately, you know, for those who have not visited our wastewater treatment plant, I encourage you all to do so. It's turning renewable energy. And so I think we should lead and really work with this Climate Action Task Force to come up with some goals for our city and then really go to work.
Thank you. So Travis, what role should the mayor play in addressing climate change in the city of Gresham?
Continuing to provide leadership is critical. Many of the things that Commissioner Morales just referenced, you know, we've got, we, at one point, we had the largest ground-based solar array around, which actually allows us to feed energy back into the actual electrical grid. Some of the things that we're doing with renewable energies with oils down at our wastewater treatment plant is innovative and critical across the country. Some of the stuff that we're doing. Stuff with the watershed, the stuff that we're doing in regards to City Hall. There's an entire solar array there that actually was put into place years ago by our current leadership that's in the, that's in the city. So those things are, so I absolutely believe the mayor's role is critical in making sure we, we lean into this, this important part of our society. It also, you know, the development code and some of the things that we can influence is also critical. Because the more people can live, work and play in their community, the less they have to get into the single occupancy cars and drive to a location that's far away. So we want to keep them here in our community and decrease our carbon, our carbon footprint.
Thank you. So Joe, what role should the mayor play in addressing climate change in the city of Gresham?
Addressing our watershed, I think we should move away from renewable energy. Renewable energy in, in the fact that we're trying to use solar power and it is not up to par to equip the city for an immediate need and it's far too expensive. I think we should explore ceramic filtering for our bull run and supply our, supply our city with its own water and get away from Portland water. I also think that we should be looking at maybe an urban farmer's market to build resources for ourselves and find, to me, that's a way that we could save money in the long run instead of buying resources from farmers across the city, or across the state and across the nation to supply our small businesses.
Thank you. So up next, we have a question for Travis Stovall. What is your strategy for ensuring all voices are heard in City Hall, specifically in appointments to city advisory committees and public decision-making?
We, we have to be inclusive. Matt starts with making sure that we are active in reaching out into the communities where we have diversity and we have challenges with historical inclusion. And, and making sure those folks are, are well aware of the opportunities that exist to lend their voice to our city and its development. And, and that's what we have to do. So much, so many times we, we'll, we'll follow the path of least resistance. And those folks who tend to be all engaged and informed are the folks that get placed on these committees. We need to be proactive in reaching out to our communities, all in our community and making sure they're well aware of what they can do to contribute to our city. A lot of folks are unaware of that and we, we need to increase that awareness and make sure that folks have that, that knowledge of how they can contribute to our city and its development.
Thank you. So Joe, what is your strategy for ensuring all voices are heard in City Hall, specifically in appointments to city advisory committees and public decision-making?
It starts with treating humans as humans. I believe we should be building self-esteem in the people. Just like myself, I'm a citizen candidate and I felt like I needed to stand up and fight for, for what I believe in. So I believe, you know, if we get out there and talk to the people and build them up, saying that they are worth their voice and they can do things to change things in the city for the better. So definitely need to get out and communicate and build self-esteem amongst our citizens.
Thank you. So Eddie, what is your strategy for ensuring all voices are heard in City Hall, specifically in appointments to city advisory committees and public decision-making?
Thank you, Carol. I don't know if you remember, but the very first city council meeting I went to was to reappoint people to the, to a commission. And when I looked at the commission, you know, I thought it really And when I looked at the commission, you know, I thought it really did not represent our city. There were no people of color on that commission and very few women. And I talked about the need for making sure that we had diversity, equity, and inclusion guidelines in place to make sure that our committees and commissions were representative of the communities that live here. I was sued by three white men for that statement of asking for more diversity and representation, which, and the other thing I would say is that term limits. And I did work with my fellow councillors to put term limits on there, and we are talking about expanding the number of seats on these commissions to provide leadership opportunities for others who want to serve.
Thank you. Okay, Travis, what is your, did I already ask you, no, I already asked you that question. Sorry, we're going to the next question here. Joe Deimers, how will you support Gresham police? Where do you stand in the call for defunding police?
Well, I'm not for defunding them at all. I mean, obviously, like I stated in the earlier question, the graph that Schmidt pulled out showed that since its inception in 2012, it was neglected because of the rising cost for their services. So currently, I'm in the process of making a GoFundMe page because part of the things that they need, I believe, are some help with tactical gear. So I wanted to get community involvement into that. But until we can get long-term funding to come in to raise their services, it's really dire straits for our police right now. But they need all the help they can get with the community coming behind them and expressing their voice, saying, you know, and letting them know that they are needed here in Gresham.
Thank you. So Eddie, how will you support Gresham police? Where do you stand in the call for defunding police?
So I think, you know, the concept of defund the police really means providing the police with some of the tools that they need in terms of training to respond to our community. The other part of this is really using resources to provide mental health, addiction, workforce development programs that actually help our community rather than policing or criminalizing them or militarizing the community. And so I do support allocating resources to some of those root causes in our community.
Thank you. So Travis, how will you support Gresham police? Where do you stand in the call for defunding police?
So as I referenced earlier, I do not believe in defunding the police. And, you know, not all communities are created equal, and we already know that Gresham has one of the lowest police per thousands in the entire metropolitan region. And so that can be challenging for the safety of our folks to protect our community. But we also need to recognize that we do have things that we can do differently. There are different ways that we can, we can address some of the challenges from a mental health issue to some of the challenges that exist, similar to what I said earlier. How do we support our community in a positive way that lifts everybody, that allows us to have communities that see a natural decrease in crime because poverty also decreases? And how do we allocate new resources to those efforts to ensure that we can support all within our community and everyone feel safe as we live, work, and play in our community?
Thank you. So this next question here is for Eddie Morales first. What portion of your campaign contributions are individual contributions of $100 or less? What portion are Gresham residents and businesses? And who are your biggest out-of-city and out-of-state contributors, if any?
Hi, Carol. So, you know, as you know, I have more contributions than any of my mayoral opponents here. Over 90% of them are from local community members. And so I'm glad that I have that broad support from our community. And I have the most diverse set of donors. I have retired individuals, youth, public employees, teachers. And so I'm really proud of the broad support. A lot of these people are people that I've met working on civil rights issues, voting rights issues, my work around national domestic violence, and restoring voting rights and protecting voting rights. One of my largest donors is a good friend of mine and former client of my business. And so.
So Travis, what portion of your campaign contributions are individual contributions of $100 or less? What portion are Gresham residents and businesses? Who are your biggest out-of-city and out-of-state contributors, if any?
So the number of, in regards to, I believe, all of my, all of my contributors that are less than, that $100 or less are from Gresham. But then I've actually raised quite a bit from, you know, around the, around the region. And these are all, of course, public information. Some of the larger donors are right here, represented in East County, our largest donors are right here represented in East County. Out of state, I think I only have maybe $300 raised from out of state. And one of those is my sister. So I thank her for supporting me in this effort, as she lives in Kansas. And to that end, my largest contribution that is outside of Gresham is a long-term client and friend of mine, Dale Lovett. He actually lived in Gresham for almost 20 years, just moved away just recently. So he had, his daughter still lives in Gresham. So he absolutely has a deep passion for this community.
Thank you. Joe, what portion of your campaign contributions are individual contributions of $100 or less? What portion are Gresham residents and businesses? Who are your biggest out-of-city and out-of-state contributors, if any?
Well, my personal contributions are probably more than, I mean, less than 1%. So 90%, 95% is probably from the small businesses and people in my community that I've networked with. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't even be here. I wouldn't even gotten halfway to where I am right now. And the only out-of-state contribution I've had is $25 from my mother. So that'll give you a little bit of a sign. Thank you.
Thank you. This is our last question for this panel, and we're going to start with Travis. Setting aside COVID-19, what do you see as the biggest issue facing Gresham right now? And how would you address it?
So the biggest issue is our budget. I mean, that's our biggest issue by far because that is the foundation of what we need to address, to invest in our community, to see our community survive and thrive. And so we've got to, we've got to make sure that we're lending our expertise and all of our efforts. The first step in that, I absolutely believe that we do need to increase the police parks and the fire fee. I mean, that's the foundation of what gives us the opportunity to respond confidently to the challenge that exists right now and then sets us up to look at the structural solutions that we have in the future, which we've already referenced a few of those that we can look at. But we really have to bring the coalition together of our community members and listen to them as we put the data and information in front of them and understand what we want to produce as a community. And so we, that is, that is foundationally one of the, one of the greatest challenges that we have as a city, as we sit here right now.
Thank you. So Joe, setting aside COVID-19, what do you see as the biggest issue facing Gresham right now? And how would you address?
Yeah, our debt, definitely the general fund at 13 million, but also the fact that we have a $50 million line of credit. So how long have we had that? Does it end up the city and for how long? So long-term solutions are going to be really needed at this point. Also, the fact that the moratorium in place by the governor is due to be removed. I don't know if that was extended at this point, but we could be looking at mass evictions once that comes off because there's no forgiveness in it and people are going to have to pay back their back rent within six months. There's also startup companies with gig workers that are being used to force people out of those situations so that landlords can fill in those units. So we could be looking at extra homeless situation. So we need volunteers for Joe Walsh's program to help support those homeless.
Thank you. So Eddie, setting aside COVID-19, what do you see as the biggest issue facing Gresham right now? And how would you address?
Yes, our budget crisis in the city is, was only exacerbated by COVID-19. And so I believe we have to freeze nonessential spending, rebalance the budget that we have within our means, and then again, really start being creative about how we gain economies of scale to provide better resources, better services, and sort of cost savings for our community. I think we're going to have a big issue on housing and keeping people housed. I think as people are being asked to return back to work and are being asked to homeschool, we need to be providing services for our families to be able to do that adequately, whether it's, you know, adequate Wi-Fi or support for our parents who are now being asked to also be teachers too. And so I think a strong partnership with our education system, with our employers and with our landlords is going to be important to ensure we keep people housed.
Thank you. So we're now up to the closing statements, and we're going to start with Travis. You have one minute, so please give your closing thoughts, Travis.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate the forum and I appreciate both candidates. We, I thought this was a forum that went really well. I believe that we will bring, we all have unique characteristics for consideration. I bring decades of proven and accomplished leadership on behalf of the very communities that I wish to now serve as mayor. I am interested in serving the residents of Gresham with distinction and dedication like many of my predecessors. I'm not interested in taking cover and direction from special interest. I'm committed to bringing together the local talented leadership we have here in Gresham to plot a course forward for our city. The work ahead requires us as leaders to be experienced in bringing people together from all backgrounds. I'm in this for the Gresham community, so we're all in this together. I ask for your support and your vote come November 3rd.
Thank you. So we're going in reverse order. Eddie, please give your closing thoughts.
Yeah, well, Carol, thank you and the coalition for providing us the time to talk about what we want to accomplish as mayors for the people of Gresham. Tonight, I offered specifics about my accomplishments, my values, and what we have to do to move forward in this future. And I back those up with experiences. Today, we heard a lot of platitudes and shallow words, but I have proven to engage our community in the last two years on council and my 20-year career. Concrete ideas and an engaged community will bring Gresham forward from the corrupt mess that our former mayor and his supporters have put us in over the last 18 years, including our budget crisis, open investigations, potential violations of the charter, and questionable use of funds. Look, Gresham families can't wait for the status quo to shift in their favor. They need action and positive change now, and I have a clear, community-centered agenda that will do just that. Please visit my website at eddymorales.com and join us on Thursday with my special guest, Stacy Abrams, one of my many national progressive friends I've worked with to make positive change.
So Joe, please give your closing thoughts.
It doesn't really matter which one of us wins. What we really need to address here is for people to come together. We need to put away our differences and work through the next few months until this lockdown comes out and everything starts opening back up. Each and every single one of us have been affected by this lockdown. Our children have been affected by this lockdown, and we all need help. I have a six-year-old son that he's suffering so much because he can't interact with his friends. And trying to run my campaign and work and come down to his level is near impossible, but I'm trying. So we need to come together, and I ask that you would join me and vote Joe Deimers for your next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you all. So thank you. We've had Joe Deimers, Eddie Morales, and Travis Stovall. Thank you for joining us this evening. Up next are our candidates for Gresham City Council Position 1, Dina Danucci and Jerry Hinton. Tracy Slack will now take over moderator duties. So please wait a few moments while we change panelists. Thank you all.
My name is Tracy Slack, and I am a member of the Gresham Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. I'll be moderator for our second panel of candidates this evening. Going to have our second panelist just test once more briefly, if you could, that you can unmute and be heard and then mute again, please.
Just test.
Thank you.
Testing.
Thank you, Dina. Again, welcome, Dina Danucci and Jerry Hinton, candidates for Gresham City Councilor, Position Number 1. As with the last panel, we'll start this round with an opening statement from each of you, and we'll follow that with three questions that were sent to all candidates in advance of the forum. Then we'll proceed to questions collected from our online community survey. And finally, we'll ask you for your closing thoughts and statement. As noted before, our questions were drawn from responses to our online community survey. Similar questions were sometimes combined, and some questions were edited for brevity or to be better applicable to all candidates. If you don't hear your question asked, it is because we received more questions than we had time for in these forums. Candidates will have one minute for most responses, but you will have two minutes apiece for the three advanced questions. With that said, I'd like to start with opening statements for our candidates for Gresham City Council, Position 1. And if we could start with you, Dina, and would you please unmute, if you already have, sorry, and introduce yourself, give your qualifications for being a city councillor, and your reasons for running, and your goals to elect it?
Thank you, Tracy. Good evening, Gresham. I am Dina Danucci. I'm running for council position number one. I'm a 20-year resident and community advocate, a proud mom of two grown kids, and grandma of two beautiful granddaughters. I have had many appointments on committees in Gresham over the last 20 years. I've had a small business, Park Place Coffee and Crepes, for seven years, which I ran during a recession and really understand what small businesses are going through. But none of that matters as much as the 20 years that I have spent working one-on-one with residents to overcome barriers within our community. I was employed here at the city of Gresham for 10 years, and I've worked in government and nonprofits with low-income communities, and my current position is a COVID case investigator of all things. Councillors have always run on the commitment to engage all of our citizens, including BIPOC and marginalized people, yet we still haven't seen it from the old guard. But for me, it is a promise. I know how to engage community voices. I know it can be done, and I won't say it is good enough until we've done it.
Thank you, Dina. Jerry, if I could ask you to please briefly reintroduce yourself and give your qualifications for being a city councillor, your reasons for running, and your goals to elect it?
Great. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight and to engage with Dina. The coalition has been great. This has been a great forum, and we hope that this continues on every year. Again, my name is Jerry Hinton. I am the current incumbent of Position 1. I am running for my third term as a Gresham City councillor. I am a husband, a father, grandfather of a little three-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter. That's our pride and joy. I am a 34-year auto executive retiree, just retired in January, great timing. I think the world retired with me. But I am very sensitive to all those folks out there relative to this pandemic. In that industry, I represented over 7,000 employees that matriculated underneath my management with sales over $300 million a year, each year. And then as president of the NAAA, the entire association, $10 billion a year. I want to continue my work on the council and appreciate all the citizens of Gresham and want to take care of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll now proceed to the next question. Thank you, Jerry. We'll now proceed to the first of our three advanced questions. You'll have each two minutes to answer. As a reminder, we asked candidates to review the city manager's recent presentation, and the city's forecasted $13.3 million budget gap, and to review the city's current budget. The city manager proposed closing the gap by either using one-time revenue, increasing the police parks, fire parks fee on utility bills, and cutting spending. The city manager presented four options. One option would double the fee to $15 a month. A second option would make more gradual increases to the fee and raise it eventually to $16.50. A third option would make some cuts to police, fire, and parks, and make a smaller increase to the fee. And finally, a fourth option would make cuts to police, fire, and park service levels, but no changes to the current monthly fee. So we asked the candidates, how would you address the city's forecasted budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future? Which of the four options to balance police, fire, and parks fund do you support? And if you were to make different budget cuts or use different existing or new funding sources, how would you fill the $13.3 million budget gap by the next fiscal year 21, 22? Do you support raising new revenue in the future, and if so, how? Do you support fees to raise revenue? We'll start this question with Jerry. Jerry, how would you address the city's forecasted $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future?
Great. Thank you for the question. This is certainly an issue that is foremost in the city. It honestly, our budget system over the last decade, or at least the last eight years since I've been involved, has been a very strong operation. We've got a very strong citizen engagement finance committee, a fantastic working staff. Again, we have to remember and keep things in perspective. Over this last year, primarily, this gap is because of COVID. We were coming into this with about a $5 million deficit. We had some low-hanging fruit that we're able to pick off and taking it down to two to three, which would have been fairly easy to remedy. But COVID, because of the unknowns there. So there are a lot of moving pieces to a city budget. We've got over 600 city staffers. It's almost a $700 million budget. There are a lot of moving pieces. And as we keep perspective relative to the entire state, this city is, again, operates off of one of the lowest budgets around relative to our size. Again, we're the fourth-largest city in the state, and we have lower per capita, almost everything. We are a very absolutely lean operation. And because of the Great Recession, we had to even lean out, and we just started coming back into our own. And again, there's a lot of this is because of the property tax issue that legislatively we are working on. Again, we're the tip of the spear there, and we're going to have to continue working on that in Salem. But I voted to increase that as a temporary fee increase, sunsetting out until we hit a levy and put a levy to the people in May and let them make a decision on where they want to go.
Thank you. Dina, if I could ask you, how would you address the city's forecast $13.3 million budget gap and create a sustainable budget for the future?
So I would like to say, first of all, thanks for the question. I would have to choose none of the above on the financing options and look at other opportunities. In the council meeting where the budget options were discussed, it was clear from our residents that that utility fee or PFP fee was very unpopular. In the sign of our current councillor not being in connection to the voices of our residents, when he could say in the same sentence that he wanted to double that monthly fee, and then he wanted to try to get rid of it and sunset it after that, and he wished that he hadn't voted for that in the first place. That's the position of a councillor who I don't believe understands the majority of our residents. We're at the worst time to expect our citizens to spend more to bail out our government, and these types of votes that don't understand how they're impacting so many of our residents or why I'm running for council. I do not believe in raising the PFP fee across the board. If the city council believes that people can bear that fee, then let's pass that fee only to the highest earners and set an income standard. At the very least, the fee must be staggered proportionately for income. Using the option to double the fee and then asking residents to apply for assistance or waivers or hop through hoops is a bureaucratic nightmare and another barrier for residents who are already in financial straits. I believe there are long-held traditions where the city tends to protect certain expenditures at the budget meeting to avoid considering cutting $100,000 expenditures because it's only a drop in the bucket is concerning. I would like us to look at every one of these line items. If there is even $5,000 in a budget that is not being used effectively at the moment, we can even think of $5,000 less that residents who can't afford to pay that utility fee or PFP fee would have to pay, and I think it's worth it.
Thank you. Let's go to our second advanced question. For this question, we asked candidates to review the mayor's pledge on police reform. It was signed by former Mayor Beimers this past spring. We asked the candidates, do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? And how would you address community concerns about policing? Should some funding for police be redirected to address mental health and other social needs that impact policing? And Dina, if we could start with you, there's only two of you to switch between.
This is going much faster.
Do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham, Dina? Why or why not?
Yes, I do believe.
How would you address community concerns about policing? Sorry.
Yes, I do believe police reform is needed, and we should stick to that pledge. But I'm willing to go a step further. As the country has become divided, so has our police institution become divided from our residents. Community and policing are no longer two words that are connected together. We need a police force that is here to serve all the people, not intimidate or dominate any of the people. There are many people in our community who have insights and experiences much more valuable than mine that must be heard from and considered when determining what the future of policing is in Gresham. Our people of color, our everyday citizens, and of course, the police themselves. These voices must be heard and respected to make our police department more effective to the needs of community members. Citizen oversight must become a permanent site, a piece of our new system, so we continue to build trust and understanding across this community. Best practices are being reviewed all over the country, and I believe we must look at best practices also in Gresham. We must discuss a way to fund social services and mental health. I don't believe it's realistic to expect our police officers to be all things to all people. I don't think it's the most efficient use of our police officers, and I also don't think it is necessarily the best care that we can give to people going through a mental health crisis or other issues. We must redirect our focus back to community policing and have our citizens and police officers working towards the same goals in unison. And we need to look at best practices being implemented throughout the country along with the voices of how that impacts Gresham residents directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. Now, Jerry, if I could ask you, do you believe police reform is needed in Gresham? Why or why not? And how would you address community concerns about policing?
Thank you for the question. I am extremely proud of our men and women of the Gresham Police Department. They do a fantastic job. Again, we are per capita with the lowest in the whole state, and yet we have the ability to turn around and mitigate and create remedies for the issues that we have in this city and the time crunch that we have relative to the few amount of officers that we have. Statistically, relative to the state, we show a very, very low count in terms of stops and profiling. It is not considered an issue in the city of Gresham relative to those state statistics, and I'm very proud of our officers in being able to maintain that kind of appropriateness as they deal with all spectrums of society. I reject the notion of defunding. I do recognize that, again, we need to create more sustainable funding for our police department, increase the funding, and with some of that funding, provide opportunities for mental health officials and officers that have that kind of training to do some of the first responding, so that all of our officers are not just catch-alls for everything that comes up and the calls that are made to the police department, because there are so, so many. Again, we need to, officers live 15 years less because of the stress of their jobs. We need to make sure they get the help and the assistance that they have through proper officer wellness and cardiac testing and that type of thing. We need to look at protecting them, not letting them be subject to danger and that kind of. I fully trust and believe in body cameras as well to create that accountability, and there's always some elements of doing things better in 21st-century policing. So I would agree with that.
Thanks, Jerry. Let's move to our third advanced question, wherein we asked candidates to review the city charter and the priorities identified with the current charter review committee. We asked the candidates, what changes in the city charter do you think are needed? Would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes if they were put on the ballot? For example, do you support districting for councillor elections? Term limits, adding an elected auditor, campaign finance reform, requiring a majority vote rather than a plurality in races with more than two candidates, or other charter changes? If I could ask, to start with you, Jerry, what changes in the city charter do you think are needed? And would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes if they were put on the ballot?
Some of the issues that are up, that are being debated relative to the city charter, which we have to look at every eight years. One is the districting. That came up eight years ago, and that was soundly rejected by the citizens of the area. One of the reasons is it's very divisive. If you have a citizen that is representative of a different ward or a different section of town, all of a sudden, you've got that councillor only concentrating on that section, not at large, as we are now, where we care about all of Gresham, and we want to make sure all of Gresham is taken care of. So I think that would make some very distinct division. Term limits, you know, it's never been that much of an issue. We're very grateful for all those who have served, but I think four years, four terms is reasonable. Adding an elected auditor, there's been a lot of talk about an auditor, but honestly, we already have an external independent auditor that meets with our citizen involvement committee relative to finance, and that report is taken to the council. So that really is already there. So I'm not quite sure why we keep talking about that. Campaign finance reform, it's only been an issue this year with some of the mayoral candidates. So I think that that may be something that would need to be taken care of relative to outside of the state. There's really these political action and factions have no place here in Gresham, a city that they probably never have stepped foot in. Requiring a majority vote rather than plurality in races of two or more candidates. Again, right now, we're a plurality situation, which means that that candidate making more, getting more votes than the other candidate would actually win, as opposed to majority. We've seen a majority rule in the city charter in Damascus, and that was the demise of that city, because they required that for a concept plan that they never could get. So I would say we need to stick with plurality.
Thank you, Jerry. Dina, if I could then ask you, what changes in the city charter do you think are needed? And would you actively campaign for or against any particular changes if they were put on the ballot?
Thank you for the question. I would actively campaign for districting, yes, as I believe council needs to have insight into the neighborhoods they serve instead of overarching policies. I do not believe that most councillors know what is going on in all of the other neighborhoods, and I believe fair representation is needed. Much of my campaign is based on the inequity of services and amenities across different neighborhoods. I actively support an independent auditor. I believe that items such as the ones that we're facing today with the budget issues could be addressed with a tough independent auditor who could look at other solutions and hold the city accountable so that we don't end up in budget situations as we are today. I definitely believe in term limits. One current system with no term limits is why I chose to run against the current incumbent in this race. I believe our long-term councillors have fallen into accepting the status quo and have lost the ability to think outside the box in which they have remained too long. I believe new energy and new ideas is what will keep Gresham moving forward. Long-term councillors become embroiled in the loyalties, not to their constituents, but to the institutions that keep them in office and to their cohorts on council, who they vote along with based on loyalty to one another. The other issues mentioned that are also very important, but are not a priority to me as much, and I would be interested in hearing if citizens have a specific interest and would be willing to discuss those things further. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. We're now moving on to the questions collected from our online survey, and we will have one minute for each of you to respond to each of these following questions. We'll start this next one with Dina. Dina, some areas of the city feel left out. Populous west-side neighborhoods feel marginalized and underrepresented, while east-side neighborhoods feel neglected as spending goes to Rockwood, downtown, and now Pleasant Valley. What will you do to include all neighborhoods and help them feel valued as members of the Gresham community?
I'm sorry, Tracy. How many minutes do I have for this question?
Sorry. We're looking at one minute apiece for responses here on out.
Okay, thank you. You know, that is actually one of my major platform issues right now, is the fact that I don't believe there is equity across our community in the treatment of how they get amenities, nor the services they receive, and that there are special interests that impact some neighborhoods more than others. I believe that we need to look at livability of our communities differently and become much more involved in community engagement by pulling neighborhoods together, which will also make them stronger and connecting more, to actually start setting goals for their neighborhoods as a whole and what livability will look like to them, because they know the priorities within their neighborhoods and that they can prioritize then how spending works within their community. I think this is one of those same issues about community engagement and really pulling people together to make those determinations, participating together in what works for their community, and actually holding the city accountable for representing their community equally and providing the amenities they feel that they believe. I think that that's a whole other discussion to talk about the community engagement piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. Now, Jerry, some areas of the city feel left out. Populous west-side neighborhoods feel marginalized and underrepresented. East-side neighborhoods feel neglected and spending goes to Rockwood, downtown, and now Pleasant Valley. What will you do to include all neighborhoods and help them feel valued as members of the Gresham community?
Thank you for the question. That is very important. Community engagement is probably one of the most important things that we need to do on council and probably something that we need to do a lot better. Each community, we have 16 neighborhood associations right now, and several of those are inactive. I'm grateful for the coalition that brings those together and the board that does such a great job at engaging those citizens. Sometimes it's not an easy thing to want to be involved as a parent or a single mother, to get involved in city politics. I'm grateful for Zoom. I think some of these types of platforms that we've now learned we can utilize during COVID, we can utilize to engage so many more people within the community that we couldn't engage before. The technology's been there, but we just never used it. So I think we need to do that. We need to support the neighborhood coalition more and in our associations more, and we need to engage those people so that they become part of the solution and find out what exactly it is that they need and then follow those goals.
Thank you, Jerry. I'd like to start this next question with you, Jerry, as well. Jerry, Gresham will soon receive its local share on the regional parks and nature bond. What process would you use to determine how Gresham's funds are prioritized?
Well, again, that was a huge bond, and unfortunately, we only got $26 million out of it. I believe we get another $7 million from the state through another matching piece, but relatively small amount of money. Now, the recs out of our parks and rec is basically nonexistent. Again, as mentioned earlier in the previous debate, we've got six to eight employees. I think it's actually I think it's actually down to six employees right now, which do pretty much take care of maintenance. We've got a lot to do. We've got a, that is really the legacy that we provide our children. So we need to utilize those funds to really upgrade the parks that we do have. We do have six undeveloped parks that we need to develop and work on through sustainable funding. Again, by creating a citizen task force and evaluating all the options that we have. Well, again, without overtaxing our citizens, but that is the legacy we need to leave our children. We need to do, get that sustainable funding for that.
Thank you, Jerry. Dina, could I now ask you, Gresham will soon receive its local share from the regional parks and nature bond. What process would you use to determine how Gresham's funds are prioritized?
So I think there's a very big issue overall about parks and how our parks have been maintained, et cetera, through quite some time as the funds have continued lingering more and more within financing the park systems. It almost feeds into that last question a little bit about equity across neighborhoods. Because there are certain parks that will not potentially get mowed in some neighborhoods while others will. I think that, first of all, that is an equity issue once again. To look at how we are maintaining and how we are making those parks livable in the neighborhoods where they currently exist, even before creating new parks. I think we've been to find some solutions on how we're going to maintain the parks we have and make them functional. Because parks are such a big part of our community, they both affect our healthy living styles. They give our kids a chance to be out in the community and engage. And they actually give us a chance to meet our neighbors as well as help our home values. Oh, boy, how did we get to stop already? I didn't even see the yellow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. Dina, I'd like to move on and start with you with the next question, which is, the city's enterprise zone program gives property tax breaks to companies that meet specific requirements. But some companies have provided very few new jobs. Sometimes a minimum job requirement is only one new hire. Would you support changes to Gresham's enterprise zone program? And should it have a higher requirement for bringing new jobs to the city?
Thanks for the question. Yes, I do believe that we can set a higher standard for enterprise zone requirements. You know, I've done quite a bit of research on this and looking at the different things that you can require along with these things and how effective they can be in actually providing additional jobs and benefits within our community. And I think we may have set the bar way too low. Yes, I do agree that there are opportunities to set some much higher standards. Our jobs in this area have a big impact on the fact that most of the people in Gresham are traveling outside of this area to go to work at a higher level than most any other city in the region. And I think that this does give us the opportunity to set some standards as far as jobs, to set some standards as far as the worker pay, and to set an agreement that looks a lot more about issues that can benefit our residents.
Thank you, Dina. Jerry, if I could ask you to address, the city's enterprise zone program gives property tax breaks to companies that meet specific requirements, but some companies have provided very few new jobs. Sometimes the minimum job requirement is only one new hire. Would you support changes to Gresham's enterprise zone program? Should it have a higher requirement for bringing new jobs to the city?
Thank you for the question. First of all, the standard is not driven by the city. The standard is driven by the state. We operate under the standard that the state has provided. And if that needs to change, it needs to be legislatively changed in Salem. So we operate under the state standard. And honestly, whatever that ratio of employee increases relative to the amount of capital improvement that they're providing, almost without fail, the company always far exceeds that. Whether it's even the requirement of one, it always far exceeds that. And typically, there's quite, it's very rare that it's just one. It's usually 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 employees. Not to mention that the tens of millions of dollars that are invested in capital improvements in that company means that that company is going to stay here. And if you look at the math, it is a good, good deal for the city. It is a no-brainer.
Thank you, Jerry. And I would like to start with you, Jerry, for this next question. Some council candidates have talked about keeping Gresham separate or unique from Portland. Some have talked about the need to better cooperate with other jurisdictions, including Portland. Do you embrace either of those ideas strongly? And what does that mean to you?
I do not want to be Portland. I think Portland is a disaster. I think their electeds are a disaster. I think their policies are a disaster. I think their homeless situation is a disaster. I think the way they dealt with protesters versus anarchists was a disaster, is a disaster. I think they are, their policies go with the wind, and they're not consistent. They do not take care of their families, of their community, nor their businesses. I do not want to be Portland. I want to be Gresham. Gresham is family-centric, children-centric. We want to be a place where you can raise your family and take care of your family. We need to maintain policies that allow us to be different, that allow us to be our own city and mutually exclusive from our Western neighbor.
Thank you, Jerry. Now, Dina, if I could ask you, some council candidates have talked about keeping Gresham separate or unique from Portland. Some have talked about the need to better cooperate with other jurisdictions, including Portland. Do you embrace either of those ideas strongly? And what does that mean to you?
Well, I embrace both those ideas strongly. I would have to say, first of all, I agree. I do not want us to be Portland as well. I am happy to live in Gresham. I moved into Gresham, and I have learned to love Gresham. And Gresham has so much beauty, and the smaller-town feel has a lot of benefits that come with that. Of course, along with those small-town benefits come some of those benefits or lack of benefits that we've been talking about, even as far as our park structure goes and some of the quality of life issues. I think that City of Gresham has chosen to stand alone too much on some of those regional issues and decided to try to figure it all out themselves. I think there is many places where we could be cooperating much closer with Portland on regional efforts where there are many experts at the table instead of assuming that Gresham knows it all on issues such related as things as homelessness and some of the metro bonds that have come through that are more regionally and that we can partner with across the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. And I think in the interest of preserving some time for your closing thoughts, I'd like to make this our last community question, if I could. And Dina, I would like to start this last question with you. And it is simply this. How can the city ensure it has housing for all income levels and spread that diverse housing throughout the city?
You know, that's a really good question, also one of my platforms. I think that housing is clearly a right that our citizens should have. I think that we need housing of all income levels across our city. Eco Northwest did a study a while back, and it said, what's the way that we can have affordable housing? It is by having the appropriate stock of housing available for all of those income levels. I think that one of the things that we definitely have to look at, and this is also, once again, an equity issue, is we tend to put everything of one type in one neighborhood and another type in another neighborhood. And I believe that we have the opportunity to actually combine our communities across socioeconomic factors for them to get to know each other and communities be more diverse. I think we can do that through incentives that we can offer as the city when it comes to the development charges and the agreements in which we sign for additional tax incentives, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. And Jerry, if I could ask you the same question. How can the city ensure it has housing for all income levels and spread that diverse housing throughout the city?
Again, Gresham is one of the lowest-valued properties in the state, especially for cities our size. So our affordability factor is already better than anybody else in the region. We need more single housing. We need more metal housing. I want to make an application to Metro to increase the urban growth boundary in our eastern sector and increase the density of housing out there and metal housing. I'd like to do some annexation to the northern part of Damascus from our southern border and take in some of that as well for some executive housing. We have some fantastic building going on. We've got hundreds of homes being built in the south already. We've got some apartments going. We're about a 50-50 split. Really would need to be more than that in terms of the ratio to apartments, however. But all of those things raises all the tide and raises all boats, which increases our tax base, which increases the general fund, which increases our budget, brings in more businesses, all those things happen with that. So I'm excited to increase our housing that way.
Jerry, thank you. Thank you both for your thoughts on all of these questions. I'd like now to segue to your closing statements. And again, for these, we'll ask you to take a minute. And Jerry, if I could ask you to start off by giving us your closing thoughts.
Great. Again, thank you to the coalition. Very much appreciate this opportunity to engage and to provide our voice. I appreciate Dina as well. A great job. And again, I appreciate your vote on November 3rd to allow me to continue my work on the council and provide that expertise in terms of budgeting to get us to that level where we can have sustainable funding without raising taxes. Again, we may need to do some things in the short term to sunset out that'll get us to that point. But there are some tools that we have in our toolbox to do that. COVID took everybody by surprise, and we will be able to mitigate this, and I'm confident of that with great leadership. Again, I am a man of faith, a man who believes in service. I believe it's the rent that we pay to live on this earth. That's why I'm running. It's not because of anything else. And I appreciate all those who are running. I appreciate my family, and I am a family man, and it all comes down to family. Everything that we do is, if we could just increase the family and increase the functionality of that family, all the world's problems would go away. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you, Jerry. And Dina, if I could ask you to give us your closing thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you for caring. Thank you for voting. Thank you, Jerry, for discussing the issues with me tonight. And thank you for your many years of service on the Gresham City Council. I know you do care. But I don't believe the status quo is working. My competitor in this race defends the current budget decisions that have us in our current state. He defends the current policing structure, and I believe he's backpedaled on the Black Lives Matter flag and wanting to increase the utility fee and then many other issues. I will continue to stand up for neighbors, get my hands dirty, and work side by side with our residents, as I always have. I don't believe you can understand our residents' struggles at black tie events or by preaching to others on family values. I have experience in government and community work. I have struggled to keep my home and pay my bills as a small business owner. I've had my heart filled and my heart broken in my community advocacy. I believe we need to see less heartbreak and begin working for the hearts and minds of everyday people and those that have been ignored for too long. I thank you, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Dina. Thank you again to our Gresham mayoral and council position one candidates who participated in this evening's forum. Mayoral candidates Joe Deimers, Eddie Morales, and Travis Stovall. And council position one candidates, Dina Danucci and Jerry Hinton. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 6th, we will have another forum for candidates for Gresham City Council positions three and five. This forum will again be an online Zoom forum from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. You can find the Zoom information to join that forum on the webpage for the Coalition of Gresham Neighborhood Colesciations at greshammorgan.gov/neighborhoodcoalition. The video recordings of these forums will also be put on our coalition webpage when they're ready. Thank you all for watching and listening this evening. We hope it has been informative. Please watch for your ballots in the coming weeks, and remember to vote by Tuesday, November 3rd. Have a good rest of your evening.